We'll call to order the regular session of the Board of County Commissioners. We begin with the pledge of allegiance, followed by invocation by Commissioner Davey Jones.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let's bow our heads. I'm going to start with a reading of Romans, Chapter eight, verse 28, which says, "And we know that all things work together for good to those who love God, to those who are called according to his purpose." That said, today, Father, as we join together as a Board of County Commissioners to do the county's business, we'd ask that you'd bless us, that we can do your work according to your purpose. And, Father, we just give you thanks today for blessing this county, for blessing our employees, for blessing our programs. And, Father, today, as we come to you, we give you thanks for this Thanksgiving season, for being a big part in our lives. And we give you that thanks in Jesus's name. Amen.
This morning, following that wonderful invocation, I would say that Thanksgiving was uneventful in our community as far as transportation concerns. We had wonderful weather. And I hope everyone had a blessed time off. It was, it's an important time of the year to acknowledge all the gifts that are given to us. And there's four faces on the Mount Rushmore in South Dakota. And one of them happens to be a lawyer from Illinois who wrote the Thanksgiving proclamation. I urge everyone to read it. All right, we have a consent agenda. And Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
And I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. This morning, we have time for public comment. Does anyone wish to address the Commission? Hearing none, we will move into the business items. And we have an addition to the business agenda. Commissioner Dries?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the agenda with the letter of support of approval included.
With the grant application.
For the grant application, yes, sir.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to amend the agenda to include the letter in support of the grant application. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. First item today is the urban area boundary. And we'll hear from the engineer McKenzie or whoever else is going to present. CWs, excuse me. Please announce for the viewing public.
CW Harper Kirk Michael, acting county engineer. The item of the day is the Board of County Commissioners asked to consider and approve the chairman to sign the City of Garden City's Resolution Number thirty-one forty dash twenty twenty-four, establishing the urban area boundary lines. Background is every ten years after the census, the Kansas Department of Transportation and the Federal Highway Administration work with the urban areas, census areas over five thousand in population to review their urban area boundaries in their jurisdiction. On November nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, the City Commission for the City of Garden City approved Resolution thirty-one forty dash twenty twenty-four to establish the urban area boundary lines. The Board of County Commissioners is not required to adopt the city's resolution. If the Board chooses to authorize the chairman to sign the resolution, they will be accepting Garden City's proposal for the changes of the UAB. Alternatives, alternative one, the Board of County Commissioners may authorize the chair to sign the City of Garden City's Resolution thirty-one forty dash twenty twenty-four, indicating the county's concurrence of the urban area boundary lines established and approved via the City of Garden City Resolution thirty-one forty dash twenty twenty-four. Or alternative two, the Board of Commissioners may not authorize the chair to sign the City of Garden City Resolution. Recommendations, staff recommends alternative one to authorize the chair to sign the City of Garden City's Resolution thirty-one forty dash twenty twenty-four, indicating the county's concurrence with the urban area boundary lines established and approved via the City of Garden City.
Questions, or CW?
Could you pull up the map of the boundary, please? Not a whole lot of questions, just mainly for information, not only just for me, but for the public. A lot of these boundaries are outside of the city limit. Does that, for example, does that give the city authority to apply those grants and overrule Finney County since it's third part of the county? Can you talk a little bit about that, would you please?
Essentially, if it's outside of the city limits, they don't really have any jurisdiction. The UAB is more of a planning classification function. Essentially, these roads within this are considered urban roads instead of rural roads.
A lot of them are gravel. And that leads to my question, are we going to be?
You're not forced to do anything.
Not saying these roads probably shouldn't be paved, but that's quite a budget weapon.
Yeah, no, there's no, there's no mandate or control that they become paved roads. It's, I guess it's kind of one of those things for a planning thing. Maybe these are roads that we look at in the future, these are in the urban area. Maybe they should be paved, maybe they shouldn't. They're just kind of.
I can't argue against not paving them other than the cost.
Yeah. Well, cost is definitely a consideration in paving roads.
I have no questions. I'll be prepared to offer a motion when you're ready.
The only thing that I wanted to make sure of and make sure for the viewing public is that this doesn't have anything to do with the agreement with the city on the operations of NDS. This is completely from the state of Kansas determining the urban growth area. It doesn't have anything to do with our NDS agreement with the city.
That's correct. That's correct.
Okay, motion time, Dave?
Mr. Chairman, with your permission, I'll offer a motion to approve for your signature the resolution. I've got to find the number here. This doesn't look right, thirty-one forty dash twenty twenty-four. Is that correct?
That is, the City of Garden City Resolution number.
But I'll, my motion is to authorize the chairman to sign in behalf of the county commission.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the county's approval of the urban area boundary approval according to Resolution thirty-one four zero dash two zero two four from the city as presented and as recommended by the county engineer. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, I'll sign. In case anybody wants to know, my fingers are cold. It's sixty-one degrees. All right. The only other item on the agenda is the approval of a letter in support of the county's application to KDOT. That was approved five to nothing two meetings ago. A letter has been presented in support of that application. Last week, I was hesitant to sign it without the Board's approval. So I'm looking for a motion to approve the letter dated December second, directed to the Kansas Department of Transportation, signed by me on behalf of our grant application.
Mr. Chairman, I will make that motion with, that you, that we approve that letter. And by the way, I think it was very well written, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that and state that whoever wrote that letter, it's well crafted.
Well, that's a good thing. I don't know where all the support should go. I only edited. And so who was the draft, draftsman or drafter of the letter? McKenzie, therein lies the kudos. Well done. I did edit it because I, I guess I was being called upon to sign it. And lawyers just can't sign something they got in a little bit. All right, it's been moved and seconded to approve the letter in support of our application as approved in our session on November eighteenth, twenty twenty-four. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, I've signed the letter. Where do you want this to go? Where do you want this letter to go? Do you want it?
We'll give it to McKenzie.
All right, I believe that we are now to our updates. And first order up is McKenzie for a development update.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. McKenzie Phillips, Development and Administrative Coordinator. I don't have many updates for you this morning. We, for Country Acres, we are moving forward with that. The contractor, he was supposed to be working on still some outstanding items last week. With the weather that we got and the moisture, that's what's kind of keeping that from, he has to wait for things to dry out before he can do it. So he might have been out there this weekend. I'll get, I'll check with him this week to see how that's going. We are sending out our employees to put up the signage. And if we can get that signage up this week, then even with the outstanding items, we'll try to get it on the, the next agenda for acceptance of infrastructure.
Have we authorized or do we allow sales of those lots pending this final completion?
Yes. Yes. And there are two houses currently being built in Country Acres. And there's another one that has submitted a permit.
Other questions for McKenzie on this report?
I'll just maybe comment. I don't think we should be too nitpicky on erosion this time of year. There's no way you're going to get any ground cover to grow.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
I don't think that should be an issue to hold up completion on this project.
That's why, as long as we can get up the signage this week, we're going to try to get it on the next agenda.
That'd be great. Anything else, Commissioner Jones? Thank you, McKenzie.
Thank you.
Next up is the Administrator's Report. Robert?
Excuse me. Working on, actually, next meeting on the sixteenth, you'll have a presentation on the EOC and jail project. You'll also receive a presentation on the Health Department EMS project as well. The Health Department EMS project will require action by the Board to move forward in letting that bid. They'll have everything in front of you for that project. We should receive evaluation, final evaluation on this HBAC system here in this facility with, within this next coming week. And from that, then, we can bring that to the Commission and probably have that presentation as well and talk about things needed to remedy the issue at hand that's been going on since inception. This week, of course, is the Kansas Association of Counties Annual Conference in Wichita. We do have the majority of the department heads going, as well as myself. Following that, on Friday, we have about nine employees that are graduating from the KU School of Public Management, getting their Certified Public Management certificate. And that'll be in Lawrence. I'll be attending that as well.
Well, my question to you is, is the presentation to this Board on the sixteenth with regard to the LEC, has that report been received from the architect engineer?
We do have a very preliminary at this point. He's fine tuning it for that presentation.
All right. And the LEC Committee, Commissioner Dries and Robert, are they getting a copy of that report before it comes?
Yes, once we, yes, once we get that final copy from them, then they will receive that, the whole committee will.
Do you have any plans to meet as the LEC Committee prior to the Commission being presented on the sixteenth?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay. Is that something you would like to do to review that prior to that? We can do that on Zoom with Sean Harding.
Probably would be a good idea.
Okay, we'll get that set up, get that information from him.
That's going to be the committee?
Yes.
Say it one more time.
The committee as well?
Correct, yes.
All right. I'd really like to see you take a review of what's going to get presented.
Okay.
And so everyone knows, although Commissioner Dries is stepping down from the Board, I'm likely to reappoint him as chairman of that LEC Oversight Committee and continue its work and appoint another Commissioner to that committee so that we have at least one or two Commissioners sitting in on that LEC Committee. It's such a big project for the county. It needs to have good involvement of the Commission during the committee process. This is, I should let Duane Better explain to the public, but the LEC is a very useful building, but it's going to cost a great deal of money to get it retrofitted and repurposed once we decide on what kind of jail we're going to build and then reuse that building. Comments, sir?
The only comment I might have is that we're seriously looking at a separate jail facility, which will dramatically decrease the expense to refurbish this current LEC building into an administration center. And it is, first my personal opinion and that of most of the committee, that for the benefit of the community, long-term benefit of the community, this is a direction we really, really need to explore to the fullest extent we can.
Well, I look forward to that presentation on the sixteenth after your committee's reviewed it prior to the county commission meeting. Would you go ahead with your report, sir?
That concludes my report.
All right, thank you. Any questions, Commissioners, for the Administrator? All right, we'll hear from the county counselor. And we have a case number filed for a foreclosure of tax warrants and judgments.
Correct. The, the case number for that is Finney County Case twenty twenty-four CV one five three for that tax foreclosure sale. It only took me three tries in eFlex to be able to get it to go through. In the meantime, there was one more, between the, between the second and the third try, there was one more property that redeemed and paid off the taxes prior to filing it. So changed slightly with that. So did have one more property come off prior to filing.
Other questions?
Has there been a date set for that sale?
No, that'll take some time getting through everything with the number of, even with one more coming off, the number of people still involved, just with interest in each of those properties and everything of that nature, I guess. The other thing in the middle of that one, the assigned judge on that one is our judge who is retiring in approximately a month. And it'll take a little bit too to fill that seat. So unless they've reassigned it, and it'll be with the, by the time that it gets through, it will be with whoever our new judge of the district court is going to be after that selection's made.
Well, the other thing is, is that during this time where we're kind of waiting, we can get everybody served. They have a right to be heard in court on the issue of the filing of the judgments and the foreclosure of those tax warrants. And we'll look forward to an update on the sixteenth as far as getting everybody served. Anything else for the county counselor? All right. Upcoming meetings and events, Madam Clark?
Nothing specific, though I did add the local consult meeting for KDOT, I believe is later this week.
It's on December fifth over in Dodge City?
Yes, in Dodge City. And that was really the only addition.
All right. And Robert, you're headed to Topeka for the KU graduation.
Actually, that is in, that's in Lawrence. And that'll be Friday. KC concludes on the fifth.
Are we sending anybody over for the fifth to the listening session on KDOT's local projects?
We will, we will get somebody to go over there.
All right, very good. Any Commissioners want to volunteer for that? Pay your mileage. All right. I think we should have a county representative there. And I appreciate you getting that, someone designated for that. All right. Other community events, anything else, Madam Clark?
No, sir.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
The library board meeting, which is a public meeting, will be on December ninth. It got altered a bit from its traditional meeting day or date because of some attended, some LSness folks are going to attend. So that'll be at five PM on the ninth.
All right, December twelfth is a career showcase in education. And what's the acronym for that? SWPRSC. I don't know what that is. As to where that showcase is at?
I'm not sure. I believe that's what it said on the schedule, but I'm not sure what that refers to.
Okay. Well, Commissioner Pishney has been really good about attending those showcases. If he's not going to be able to attend on the twelfth, I may have to attend one of those myself. But I need to know where it's at. Would you ask Kelly, she's on that board, and we'll find out what that acronym is for as far as the address? And please let me know.
Yes, sir.
Okay, then just on to February. So everyone can recall and remember, the county is a major sponsor of the showcase program. And February sixth, here is the Career Showcase in Healthcare at the Fairgrounds. And then on February twentieth, a career showcase on multi careers in liberal. And the final one on our schedule is April second, City and County Essentials. One in which our officials and employees have well organized and had great attendance is April second, twenty twenty-five at the Finney County Fairgrounds. And I'm sure we'd like to see a lot of students and businesses involved in these career showcases, demonstrating to our students and young adults that there's plenty of work to do in southwest Kansas. We just need to find out about it and make sure that those people are attending. And I will be working to make sure that USD four five seven is involved in these showcases as presented. Commissioner, report, anything else on the schedule?
Mr. Chairman, I believe that that is the Southwest Plains Regional Service Center, which is in Sublet.
Oh, you mean the SWPRSC?
Yes, I apologize, yes.
In Sublet. Okay. Well, if you would, double up and make sure, send me a text and with the date and time so I can get it on my calendar. I'll need to check with Commissioner Pishney. If he's not going, we should have a representative. All right. We're light on Commissioners today, so we'll go left to right. Commissioner Dave Jones?
I have new meetings to report for the, since our last Commission meeting, except I did go to Goodland on Friday to attend a family gathering and a mother-in-law's one hundred and first birthday. So you talk about having a long life. Last year, at her hundredth, a newspaper reporter was there making, writing a story and asked her what her secret old age was. And Minnie Bell said, oh, it's simple. And Minnie Bell said, oh, it's simple, you just have to remember to keep breathing. So that's the secret to long life. But that said, I do have meetings tomorrow. I'm going to represent the county, serving on a board for a battalion fire chief position. And then Skyler announced late in the week that LEPC is meeting tomorrow. So if everybody can get through with things, I'll try to make that LEPC meeting.
Okay, for the acronym, that does know what the LEPC?
Okay, Local Emergency Planning Committee, I'm sorry.
All right.
It's created by FEMA. You don't know what that?
And that one I got.
Okay, all right, thank you. That's it.
Short on meetings a little bit too much. I had the Fair Board meeting this month. A lot of policy discussions for their own local policies and as well as with the extension district. A lot of time being spent on those policies. Great Plains Development Monthly Meeting went kind of uneventful. They have quite a number of applicants at this point in time. They're quite busy, which is good. And lastly, I did miss the economic, I mean, Convention and Visitors Bureau meeting. And I don't think I was the only one ill that day. I don't believe even they had a quorum. So it's a tough week for a meeting on that one. And that's pretty much it.
All right, I did not have a compass meeting. They do not meet on the fourth Thursday in November for a reason. And so we'll have a Christmas party and an update for that board appointment for me. Several meetings with regard to economic development. And things are going well in our community, and we need to be mindful of the impact that continued development has. And with the session, Commissioner Pishney is in Topeka today. Legislature meets formally, informally, for the purpose of choosing leadership. It's an exciting time for us here in southwest Kansas with a new senator, Dr. Bill Clifford, over in the Senate. And it'll be exciting to see who gets chosen for leadership positions in the Senate. I think the House is, the top leadership and second position are in order. We'll see how a couple of other assignments play out. It's important for the freshman people, both in the House and the Senate, to get committee appointments that are beneficial to our districts here in southwest Kansas. I think that concludes our agenda for this day. Our regular session is set for December sixteenth at eight thirty. We will have regular session on January sixth at eight thirty. We will have a special session on January thirteenth at eight thirty for the purpose of swearing in new commissioners. It's yet to be seen the timing of Commissioner Pishney's resignation, having been elected. And that election's been certified of his position to the House of Representatives. He will be resigning from this commission. And the details and how that will work out and whether the central committee's work can be accomplished prior to the thirteenth remains to be seen. So with that, is there any other business before the county? If not, motion to adjourn?
I'll move to adjourn.
I'll second.
Move to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned. Thank you, men.